Good evening. I'd like to call the order. The Acting Attorney's Special Board of Education closed session. We took with the matter of public employee discipline dismissal. We took no action and will convene the regular Board of Education open session meeting this evening at 7:04. Minister Williams, would you please read some of the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the roll call show that Alexander Zuko and President Ed Gilman are both absent and they are excused. Is there any change to the order of business?
There is not.
I entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Mary Condon.
Board Member Wong.
Yes.
Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Acting President Hammond.
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Two point six one, I'm sorry, let's go down one, is the approval of the minutes of the Board of Education organizational meeting on entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Board Member Wong.
Yes.
Acting President Hammond.
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Now time for communication, that's why everybody's here tonight and we'll try to know as quickly as we can. We have so many people, it's great to have a lot of folks here. We wish to recognize and congratulate, first off, Miss Margaret Jeanne Antilon, first-place winner of her essay entitled "The Five Days of My Life" in a national essay contest published in Teen Book, Stirred But Not Shaken.
Mrs. Hirsch, I see you here. Would you, is Jeanne here?
Jeanne, come on down. Members of the school board, Dr. Torosian, cabinet members, thank you so much for this moment to honor one of our former Quest students because, in fact, this second semester, Jeanne also transitioned to Monrovia High School successfully. So that's a tremendous step in her path also. This is a national contest that was put on by the Next Generation Press in Boston with hundreds of teens from the ages of thirteen through nineteen that entered and Jeanne won first prize out of all of those in this contest. So she's now published in this book, Stirred But Not Shaken. I have a copy for you, Jeanne. I have my copy that I would like autographed by the author and I am thrilled to present our prize winner to you.
We were all lucky enough last week to get a copy of her essay. It's a moving tribute to her life and the struggles that she faced getting to the point in time she is right now. I would encourage each of you to read it. You were very, very brave to write such a stirring expose of yourself and you seemed to have left nothing behind and when I read it, it struck me deeply what a courageous young person you are. Congratulations to you on your achievement on that. Thank you. So we're gonna come up here and take a picture with you and step over here. Great story. Up next, I'd like to have Principal Cindy Lathrick come up and introduce two very important people from her campus.
Good evening and I'd like to invite Mary Peterson and Juana Kramer to come down. I have to tell you that Monroe Lions are roaring with pride because these are two of our finest.
You're first.
Juana has been teaching for many years and she and I kind of started around the same time. I remember we taught at the same school back almost thirty years ago, so, oh my gosh, Juana. We've been around a while, haven't we? Juana has been teaching for many years but is always willing to try new teaching strategies and programs. She loves her profession and loves to watch her students become scholars. Through the years, she's often volunteered to be a part of Monroe's leadership teams and school site council. Her kindergarten teaching partner says that Juana is the best partner a person could have. She's supportive and caring and makes her laugh every day. Juana has a positive spirit, a great sense of humor, and makes Monroe a fun place to work. Thank you, Juana, for all of your hard work.
We don't have to stand around. I just want to present this to Juana on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Pam, for coming and representing. John, thank you for being here tonight. Judy, thank you so much for being here. Without the contribution of the entire community recognizing the people who make the difference in our community, we would not be the town that we are. So thank you so much for everything that you've done.
And now Mary. Mary Peterson is the heart and soul of Monroe School. She's the first person that people see when they visit the school and her knowledge and kindness make a huge difference to parents, students, staff members, and visitors. Mary has a wonderful work ethic. She comes to work early, leaves late, and is always willing to take on new tasks and learn new things. During a typical day, she wears many hats, including nurse, secretary, school ambassador, social coordinator, and artist. She's organized and efficient, caring and responsible. Mary keeps the principal in line, that's me, telling her where to go, when to be there, and what to do. The school might function without a principal but not without Mary's calm competence. Pretty soon, we're gonna have to say happy trails to Mary because she's retiring at the end of this year. We're not ready to do that, but we wish her well and will miss her.
Mary, once again, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and the Monrovia Unified School District, Pam Fitzpatrick, John Watson, and Judy from Foothill Credit Union who does so much for our community, thank you so much. Please accept this as a small token of our esteem as well as these traveling gifts and I'm sure there's cookies and all kinds of wonderful things from different merchants in our community.
Thank you.
And if you'd step over into the center, we can get a photograph with you. Yes, I'm sorry.
There's more swag there.
This is a little bit like Christmas. Well, you know, like this part, Pam. In order to make sure that Monrovia is compliant with the new bag tax that we have, we, we, I'm not a huge fan, we have these reusable bags. Thank you so much. Next, I'd like to have Principal Suzanne Heck come up, please, and she'll introduce two wonderful people from her campus.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out today, the board. Thank you for being here to honor some really terrific people. First, I would like to have Mr. Jeff Kroll come on up. We brought nose makers. Jeff Kroll is a motivated and enthusiastic fourth-grade teacher. His passion for teaching is evident in his creative ways and his effective presence in all subject matters to his students. Just this week, he came into the staff lounge bursting at the seams with excitement at the progress his students were making with fractions with the use of tanagrams. He has high expectations for each student to be as ready as they can to move on to fifth grade and is willing to do whatever is needed to get them there. In addition to his teaching responsibilities, which are many, Jeff also cheerfully has taken on many other duties at Plymouth, such as training students for the MEO Games, the Monrovia Elementary School Olympics, being a member of our leadership team. He is preparing our gate students for the annual Science Olympiad and he has headed up the Power Savers Group, which has made the Plymouth staff more diligent about saving energy. This is an especially appropriate position for Jeff because he's such an energetic guy. Jeff is always willing to go the extra mile. In fact, he sometimes uses his break time to run with the kids at recess. Jeff makes Plymouth fun. We appreciate his sense of humor and positive attitude and so do the students and parents. His enthusiasm rubs off on the rest of us and we're glad he's part of our Plymouth family. Let's hear it for Jeff. Yeah, if any of you had Mr. Kroll as a student, can you raise your hand or give a quick shout out and say, hey, hey, hey? There's a couple of you out there.
Jeff, congratulations to you being selected. Again, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and all the representatives. Please accept this as a small token. You need a couple more hands to get through this and something to hang on the wall is reminded.
The next recipient is one of our wonderful play team employees and this is Karen Meza. Mrs. Karen Meza, would you please come on up? Karen Meza is one of our playground aides at Plymouth Elementary School. Mrs. Meza always goes above and beyond her duties. She always arrives before her scheduled time and leaves after her scheduled time. She is loving and caring with all the students and treats them with kindness and respect. I have also witnessed Mrs. Meza interact with the parents and she's always polite and helpful with them. Mrs. Meza takes time to listen to the concerns of little ones as well as the concerns of adults, too. What I value most about Mrs. Meza is that she takes time out of her busy day to really listen and help students, parents, and staff. The fact that she listens is very important. Just that quality alone, Karen, is hard to find in some people these days, so thank you. Mrs. Meza always conducts herself in a professional manner. I have seen, I've never seen her be dismissive or intolerant or impatient with anyone. She has a big heart for everybody and we absolutely love having her with us every day. Mrs. Meza connects very well with our school community. Her positive attitude, especially in the morning, helps get the day off to a good start. She always, she bounces in. She's just like, hi, people, good morning, every day. She's just a great way to. She makes sure that our students eat their meals and are ready for a day of learning. Full tummies make better learners and that's important, especially with our youngest students. Karen mostly works with our TK population, our little four-year-old buddies. They have their own agenda and she rolls with it really well, so we are grateful for that. Mrs. Meza is an invaluable asset to our school community. She's caring, kind, patient, and positive. We are fortunate to have her as part of our Plymouth family. We all strive to follow Mrs. Meza's example. She truly is someone to look up to.
I think you've got just the common theme of the people who have been recognized this evening and Karen, you're just another one on a long list of people who exemplify these attributes and that is going above and beyond. Again, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for recognizing the wonderful people that work for the Monrovia Unified School District as they serve the kids of our district. Karen, thank you very, very much. Great job. Congratulations.
Oh, I was gonna take it. Oh, no, no, no.
Karen, great job.
Thank you.
And now I'm gonna ask Duke to come up, please, for just a second. There are a number of people here who have been contributing, not just this year but for many, many years, making sure our students have that little boost with a tutor. And you're going to be introduced into the crew that Duke heads and some people that I just hold near and dear to my heart. I see Joanne Spring over here and Jim Spring, who, yes. They both serve as a shiny example of how one person can truly make a difference in their community. Thank you guys so much. Duke, we introduce this to everybody here.
Sure. Thank you very much, Rob. The, this is the fourteenth year of our program and in these fourteen years, I think this may be one of the biggest that we've had. We had, we have twenty-seven college tutors from Citrus, Cal Poly, PCC. We have another five volunteer tutors, I'll introduce tutors, and we have ninety-seven high school and eighth-grade honors and math students who are becoming big brothers and sisters to the, some of the struggling kids at their schools. They're just absolutely amazing kids and so we're gonna give you a quick chance to introduce them. Then we're gonna bring them over to the Learning Center to get out of your way and we'll give them their certificates, awards that are given by the board, and also they'll be given their community service hours and we're gonna have a raffle for some Disneyland tickets. It's gonna be a real, we'll have a great, great time over there. But anyway, all this happens because of the community that we live in. We live in a great community. You've met Jim and Joanne already. Our school district has been absolutely supportive of everything that I do, from Dr. Torosian to Sue and Darwin and, and it's just been tremendous. Everybody at the district pulls together for this kind of a program to be successful. Also, our board, they have also always been very supportive of us and they do things like the celebration tonight where they actually celebrate these kids and celebrate these tutors. So we're really pleased. Also, in the community, we have Monrovia Reads, which is a, our founding organization. Fourteen years ago, it was Monrovia Reads that kind of set this program in place and they've been supporting us ever since. They give donations and we can, so we can do fingerprinting and TV tests and it doesn't cost the district anything. They pay part of tutor salaries. They're absolutely amazing. The Rotary in Monrovia has always been kind to us. They give us their literacy money every year and this goes to a good cause with our proactive tutors. The Boys and Girls Club of Monrovia, I don't see John Wilson here tonight, maybe it's John here. Oh, John's back there, all right. John Wilson is the president. The Boys and Girls Club of Monrovia has been absolutely phenomenal. They pay the salaries of our proactive tutors, I mean, our past, our teachers, our two teachers at Santa Fe and at Clifton, they're the ones that donated the Disneyland tickets. They used to give us their bus to take our kids over from the high school back over. So they've been, and John, going to the little extra yard today, this year, gave us our, one of our number-one tutors, Kylie Wilson, who is an eighth grader from, over at Clifton and has done a great job for us as a tutor this year. So Boys and Girls Club is tremendous. All of this is just, again, by way of saying what a tremendous community we have. And I wouldn't, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out one other people that we really want to thank, the families and the parents of the tutors that are here tonight. I know it's not an easy thing to come in an evening and give up your evening, but they come and it's because of you that we have these successful tutors. They always say the apple doesn't fall far from the tree and I think that that's really true when it comes to the families and, and thank you so much. We celebrate you, the families, as well as the tutors tonight. So I'm gonna stop now and the two, we have, I mentioned, I think, that we have five adult volunteers. Two of them are here tonight to represent it. If I'd like Janice Tuttle to stand up, Janice is one. She has given us a great, great help at the high school. She's done the Algebra One classes at the high school in Tudoringham and Tim Rodriguez in the back who has worked over at Mayflower. Tim is another one. I don't know, Anna, I don't think is here tonight, but there are a couple of the other adult tutors. So it's a great, they're great and we really appreciate them. Okay, what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna call the names of the tutors. When you hear your name, come on up. The board will shake your hand and then we'll proceed to go over, we'll get out of their hair and go over to the Early Learning Center where you'll get your certificates and we'll do our raffle and our drawing and everything. So when you hear your name, don't hesitate to come on up and we'll go from there. All right. There are quite a few, but I went through this list pretty fast, I hope. Okay. We're gonna start with Monrovia High School. Ricky Acuna, Lilia Alvarez, Maritza Aradondo, Jose Astroquilo, Louis Alala, Andrea Banuelos, Kelsey Rahas, Monica Cabrera, Henry Carlson, Michael Castillo, Madeline Curry, William Denstot, Ian Flores, Kim Francis, Caroline Gaeta, Daisy Garcia-Pascual, Victor Gill, Wyatt Gray, Hunter Hawthorne, Taylor Heckenova, Jacqueline Hernandez, Rachel Hauser, Elisa Abara, Bianca Johnson, Sanaya Cattelli, William Lung, Cole Lingana, Moses Mejia, Mark Mendez, Kelsey Miller, Daisy Morales, Amorous Murphy-Richard, Myra Nerea, Ulyssa Orozco, Marina Orozco, Ashling Obern, Melissa Palmeiroz, Daniel Pettaplace, Stephanie Pettaplace, Nathan Farm, Alex, Alexis, I'm sorry, Pina, Samantha Pinto, Kayla Polnitz, Samantha Proctor, Dalton Reynolds, Kelsey Ramos, Adrian Sessedo, Joshua Santiago, Jenna Seawright, Andrew Soto, Jacob Sinkowski, Katie Turner, Ira Virrell, and Christopher Yen, that's our high school kids. Now, we have about, we have about twenty-five from Clifton, Luke Anderson from Clifton, Mitchell Alala, Peter Burey, Lilia Burns, Justin Carles, Jordan Franco, Byron Garcia, Juan Gutierrez, Morgan Ho, Kaye Kearney, Morgan Lee, Brandon Lewis, Alexus, Aleximus, Aleximus Lopez, boy, Timmy Miller, Adrian Navarro, Cheon Redman, Amir Sora, Elisa Warner, Kate Weezer, Kylie Wilson, Chris Wu, and Rachel Nguyen. And last but not least, Santa Fe. Santa Fe, Victoria Gueyo, Ariana Brooks, I saw Ariana here today, Amaya Carmona, Katie Cassaris, Jasmine Chavez, Isabel Damascus, Sebastian Dizon, Shelby DeRitter, Javier Escobal, Max Faulkner, Andrea Frer, Jocelyn Garcia, Juliana Joya, Juliana Lopez, Kaylee Luttenbacher, Haley Mitchell, Julian Quirros, Javier Radillo, Cassandra Romero, Samantha Rosales, Alexis Ruiz, Madison Sarmiento, Julian Vasquez, Yasmin Vasquez, and Paco Wong. And if there's anybody that for any reason we missed or you didn't hear your name, come on up. Thank you, thank you, thank you, on behalf of all of us. These kids are absolutely amazing when you consider after a long day of school, they come two, three times a week after school and spend an hour with a struggling student to help them. So it's amazing.
We can stay up here for a second so you guys can rotate in.
And...
And we'll continue on. Up next is Board Member Reports. Mr. Williams, please.
Yes, Mr. Hammond. On behalf of the individuals that I accompanied in San Francisco with regards to the Golden Bale Award, and as you can see, they're showing the pictures up, oh boy, I don't remember that shot. I remember that shot. But as you can see, Sasha, Dr. Whitson, Dr. Terosin, Mayor Lutz, we all made a presentation on behalf of Healing Connection and received the Golden Bale Award, which I understand from Ms. Maracanda is our 17th one, and I'd like to present this to the Vice President of the Board on behalf of the entire Monrovia Unified School District.
Terrence, this is fantastic.
You got a ring to bear, Mr. Hammond?
I'll give it up. School's in session. I would like to thank Terrence and his leadership in making sure that this program got off the ground and was successful. It is very important that a community takes care of its youth, and through this program that looks at people and their, the possibility that they could be in danger, and putting ourselves in that place to be helpful if they are in danger will truly play to be a blessing in our community for years to come. And this is yet one example of some of the good things that you bring to the table, Terrence. It's a great program. I appreciate our partners in this program, the City of Monrovia, all the students that were involved, Sasha, who came back and spoke in San Francisco, and everybody who is deeply touched by the loss of a loved one through suicide. May we never have to experience it ever again, and may we as a community keep this program going forward to help prevent anything like that. Thank you so much, Terrence.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond.
Up next, we have our Student Representative Report, and Jasmine Diaz is here to tell us about all the exciting things that are happening on campus.
Okay, so we first have our winter sports that are starting league that begin this week. We have our first boys' and girls' basketball game on January 1st. The girls' basketball game is at 5:15, and boys are at 7 o'clock. And then we also have our boys' first soccer game at 3:30, also on January 21st. ASB is having our second blood drive, and it is on January 22nd. Any teachers or chaperones or adults, just cut right through in front of the line. ASB and senior class are sponsoring Winter Sadies on January, February, I mean, February 7th from 8 to 12, and ticket prices are 25 with ASB and 30 without. And the basketball game for Winter Sadies is on February 4th at 7:00. And the College and Career Center is hosting a financial aid night for seniors on February 5th in the library.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wong.
Quick update, boys' soccer, 1-6-0. So with that, we can move along. Could have been 7.
Thank you, Jasmine. Next is our report from the Superintendent.
Thank you, Acting President Hammond, members of the Board. We are going to embark on the process of aligning our local control accountability plan, which we developed last year through a series of meetings, while updating our strategic plan. Our strategic plan sunsets in 2015, and this is a plan that really serves as an umbrella leading and guiding this organization, and we have the opportunity to envision what we want for each of our students in the next five years. And that process, coupled with a review of our progress with the LCAP, will help drive this organization to greater heights. So I'm looking forward to that process. The first meeting will be January 22nd in the evening from 6:30 to 8 o'clock here in the boardroom. In addition to that, this week we've had multiple activities, and as just a reminder to parents, Monday is a holiday where we celebrate the life and work of Martin Luther King Jr. with activities and lessons in various classes and at each of our schools. And finally, Mr. Hammond, I want to congratulate you for earning and being awarded at the Annual Chamber Dinner for your Military Service and Stewardship Award. Congratulations. It is quite an honor to be recognized by the community for your contributions. So congratulations to you.
Thank you very much. Now is a time that's set aside for public comment. Anybody in the public wishing to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. Ms. Maracanda, do you have any? Next up, we have public comment for items that are on the open session agenda. Anybody wishing to speak to the board on any matter? Ms. Maracanda, do you have? Seeing and hearing, no one will close that portion, and we'll entertain a motion. Oh, Mr. Gillan's back. I'll slot.
The grand entrance.
Fashionably late, I apologize. I had a granddaughter was born a little early this morning, not only early in the morning, but early in the pregnancy, and it's been nip and tuck all day. But she made it, and looks good tonight, and the doctors are pleased, so I was able to get over here. All right. We're moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Maracanda, would you call the roll, please?
Board Member Wong.
Yes.
Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
President Gilland.
Yes.
Motion carries for a zero.
All right. Moving on to item 7.5, 2013-14 Audit Report. Mrs. Wu.
Yes, Department of Education and Superintendent Cabinet, our independent auditor firm, Maus Levy-Hassan, they have finished our audit report for the 2013-14 school year. Tonight, Mr. Craig Hassen, the managing partner of the firm, will present a report to the board and the communities.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Craig Hassen. As Ms. Wu stated, I'm the managing partner of our Southern California offices, and I apologize as I'm battling a little bit of laryngitis that I've had for a week. So if you need me to repeat anything, please go ahead and just ask. I believe we have a slideshow for you here tonight, and we'll go through it. This is our presentation of the audit to the board. And I wanted to start with, it doesn't look too good, does it? I wanted to start with an executive summary. I'm not sure if you got a hard copy handout with you, if this isn't working too well. But this is an executive summary of what we're going to talk about and what pertained to the audit this year. And if you want me to leave after this, because it's all good news, you can just tell me to go away, and I'll be happy to do so. Anyway, what we've done is, on the audit as a whole, we have an IT expert here? Oh, he's working on, that's my. I think we, there you go. As the audit as a whole, our independent auditor's report was issued under unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which is what everybody strives for. There are also a few other reports included in your total financial package, and that includes an audit report on your major federal money that you've spent for the year, and that also was unmodified. And also on your state compliance guides, we also issued an unmodified. Again, that's clean, that means there's nothing that was, that we found that was materially misstated, or there was no material non-compliance with laws and regulations and contracts and grants. Also, there are no findings overall. I understand, I am not, I'm not the engagement partner on the district audit, but I am a concurring partner, I did review the financials, and I know there is a management report that was issued with some small findings on your ASBs. Now, that's normal with almost every school district within the state of California. Our firm does well over 30 throughout the state, and I don't know of any off the top of my head where there isn't a finding on one or two ASBs. So it's just normal, it's just the, you know, the spots on the leopard, they're there. They always will be unless you hire more people to oversee things, and you have some more internal controls, especially over receipts, because money comes in from different activities, and it's hard to keep track of a lot of that and do the proper controls and proper paperwork to follow up on it. The next is going to be a report, a letter that we sent to the board. It's called Required Communication Under a Statement on Auditing Standards Number 114. And that basically talks about our responsibility to you as those in charge of governance. And we talk about what we did, we talk about some of the more material items that happened or that are, that are reported throughout the audit, if there were any material adjustments that we had to make, what the estimates, what the most material estimates in the report are, just to bring you, give you a good overview of our audit, our responsibilities, and what to look at. And if there was anything that we ran into with staff that may be questionable or that you want to see, for instance, if the business office wanted to go out and get a second opinion on anything, we would like to know that, and we would report that, that they went out and did such. So that's a report that you should have also in your hands. So I've just summarized the next couple of pictures here, you know, there's, we would report to you any audit adjustments, significant ones, and then that report, it comes along with your management letter. That should have been in a separate report issued to you. Now, this was, SAS 114 should have been also a report given to you early on in the audit process. It's called a planning report that also talks about what we're going to do, what our timeline is, and what the auditor does during the audit. And then we summarize it with the one you received in the last month. So you can put those two together and see how the audit went. As far as what we do during our audit, we'll go ahead and confirm all the cash and investment balances directly with the institutions that hold the cash, whether it's a bank, or whether it's the LACO, whatever it is. We'll confirm all the debt and bond, with the bond trustees, so we have verifiable balances. We verify receivables and payables. We do subsequent testing to make sure that the district picked up everything they should have. We assist the city, I'm sorry, we assist the district with a lot of their accounting and knowing what to post, and working with between the district and LACO. As far as the opinions, if you look at the statements that you have, you'll see that on page two, as I said earlier in the executive summary, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is on page two, and that covers the entire statements as a whole. On page 82, there's the other report that we talked about as far as state compliance, and that was also unmodified. You can read that. And 83 also with the federal awards that were spent. Gatsby 34, that's what all districts had to go to back in the mid, early to mid 2000s, and it made districts and government agencies all put different things now into the reports, like management's discussion and analysis. This is produced by the district. We review it, we look at it, we tie numbers in, but it's not ours, it's yours. And it's a great summary for anybody that doesn't want to spend hours reading numbers and trying to dig through things. It gives comparisons from this year to last year and explanations for any material variances. Then comes the government-wide financial statements, which are the district's entire assets and liabilities. It's full accrual accounting. So you'll have all your capital assets, your buildings, your land, and then you'll also have long-term debt, that's also put on there, including any, I don't think the district has OPEB, but any type of compensated leave, that doesn't show up on your general fund or any other, other separate funds. So this captures everything to make it more similar to a private entity. Then you'll have your fund financial statements, and I know districts love to make sure that their general fund is positive and good, but it also includes all your non-major funds, you know, special ed funds and things like that. Then in sequence, the notes of the financial statement come in, which talk about your significant accounting policies and details of balances and explanations as what those balances are, and, you know, potentially for debt issues, your future maturity and requirements to pay that debt. We have some required supplementary information. The most significant is the general fund budgetary comparison, compares the original budget, the final budget, and the actual numbers, so you can see where variances occur. Financial statement analysis just talks about the balance, the fund balance of the general fund and its assets plus deferred outflows of resources, which is new this year as implementing Gatsby Statement Number 65, and subtract the liabilities and deferred inflows of resources, and that equals fund, that equals fund balance. Now, what the Gatsby, what the powers that be have done is that there's certain assets and liabilities that don't belong under assets and liabilities because they benefit or they cost in a future period, so they've moved into deferred inflows and outflows. The state of California requires that the district maintain a 3% reserve, and on a particular page, and I'm not certain which exact page it is, but it shows that the general fund for the district is over 15%, which is high above what the state recommends the lowest be. Also in the general fund, the total revenues were 51 million, prior year was 47 and a half million. Total expenditures were 52 million compared to 47.7 in the prior year. The fund balance for the general fund decreased a total of 721,000, and you have 10.2 million as fund balance. There's different components of the general fund. We call them non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Non-spendable is something that, like an inventory, you can't spend. So that's a particular component of fund balance. Restricted are the items restricted by other sources, you know, your special ed or some of your federal grants, whatever, you know, whatever you might have. And that's 1.4 million, and that's restricted for education program. There's an assigned fund balance of 553,000. Now, the board has given authority for the staff to assign fund balances, and there's various items that it's been assigned. I think the CBO and maybe the Superintendent got together and said, we're going to assign 553,000. I have a list of that if you want me to go into it, but notice that that's been set aside for future expenditures. And then you have $8 million that's unassigned that can be used for normal operations. So in summary, we talked about unmodified auditor's opinions throughout. The general fund balance has improved and is sound overall. Management continues to do an excellent job with preparing the financial report. There are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that were found, and no findings were noted in your, in your federal compliance. So in conclusion, I think the district did a fantastic job over the year in everything from its management to looking out for its expenditures, keeping track of them, that they follow along with the revenues, and there's no overspending. And then, for future issues, we talk about retirement costs, which are constantly going up, and then as far as reporting requirements, which we'll see new next year, is the implementation of Gatsby Statement Number 68, which is how you're going to report your pension liability. which is how you're going to report your pension liabilities. And what's going to happen is STERS and PERS are going to be issuing reports whereby in the government-wide statements, the full accrual that show all your assets and liabilities, it's now going to show your pension obligation, which is going to be huge. Everybody's going to have to show it. It's going to be big dollars. But it's going to be a requirement and it's going to be reflected in the statements. So. That, that is my presentation, and I'll open it up for any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you so much for being here. I'm presenting the report, and thanks to our business, uh, group for doing a fantastic job this year.
Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
All right. All right. Moving on to item seven point six, Memorandum Understanding with Community Media of the Foothills. Do I have a motion?
Some of them. Second.
Move then seconded. Dr. Throsian?
Certainly, we've been in communication with, uh, KGM to work collaboratively and, uh, develop some sort of memorandum whereby they would continue to provide services, uh, video, uh, services as well as live streaming services for our board meetings and, uh, as well as to provide, uh, some public service announcements. In exchange, we would be offering them space that we found here in the, uh, district office in an area that is no longer, um, regularly used. And this exchange will provide for additional communication from the district out to the community as well serve as a basis for future joint endeavors in terms of grants or any other collaborative activities where our students might benefit from the expertise of those within our community. The memorandum of understanding has been reviewed by both parties and will be submitted to the KGM board for approval tomorrow evening at their meeting.
Any questions or discussion?
Uh, very briefly, just so people understand how we do this. Uh, so in this particular case, we're, we're exchanging some of our excess for, for their services. Uh, and when we do this, approximately how much space are they going to be using? Ballpark?
It would be the equivalent of four offices, regular-sized offices.
Four offices? And do we have an approximation of what an equivalent would be?
About five hundred square feet.
About five hundred square feet? And, and what would we estimate that value to be at? Approximately? I know we did this with our servers, for example. We have, uh, an estimation.
No, we did not. Six hundred. I think that's a thousand dollars a month. Because it's a basement.
I just estimate because the room is the basement, the CLC. So, um, I think probably a thousand dollars a month.
About a thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, so a thousand dollars a month, uh, for the services of, of, for KGM, uh, not only to broadcast this, but obviously for things that they can use to, for the community. I, I, I still think that is, uh, a good thing since we don't need it, it's excess space. It's surplus for us. But I, I just want to put it on the table, what, what these things are for and what the costs are that are associated with these.
Good point.
And part of that trade-off, it will eventually be live stringing, streaming of our board meetings, so.
The big, the biggest thing is, right, is getting this information that's at a board meeting out to the public in a manner in which they can use it. Um, right now, it's less than desirable.
It will also allow for the archiving of board meetings that have been, um, taped.
Any more discussion, questions? No? Mrs. Mary O'Condon, please take the vote.
Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Board Member Wong.
Yes.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
President Gilland.
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Item seven point seven is a status report on our school campus fencing. Ms. Wu?
Yes. Um, tonight, uh, Mr. Mans Machali, he will, um, present aboard some, um, fencing project at, um, Mayflower and Santa Fe and estimate the cost.
President Gillian, members of the board, Dr. Throsian, thank you for this opportunity again. Uh, we're going to just, uh, talk about fencing real quick at, at a couple of our sites. Uh, we've been watching. We've had some, uh, meetings at Mayflower with the PTA as well as the principal. Um, some very, very good meetings. Um, they're very, um, strong opinionated as to the type of fence that they want. Um, but what we have here is just a couple of views here of the, the, uh, top slide is looking at the K area facing north, and the bottom side is at the field area facing, facing north. And, um, this is the aerial of, of the site. And this, um, would be, the field fence would come back here and then tie into that concrete retaining wall that's in front of the, of the library building that's there, as well as the K area, K area would be over here and wrap around these three sides, right here with a six-foot fence. This is Santa Fe, looking at the, uh, looking south at the, uh, the south property line. That, uh, concrete rail and slat-type, uh, wall is tired. We spend, um, quite a bit of time, at least once a month, out there putting the slats back in and concreting them back in place. And it, it looks pretty bad and it's, it's in, um, pretty poor repair. This is just the, uh, an aerial of the same thing, which shows the south, um, sorry, property line fence, um, along, along the back fence, about five hundred and forty foot of, of fence, uh, that's there. This is the cost that I've, uh, put together. Uh, the Mayflower Kinder area, uh, is approximately eight thousand dollars. It's around, um, fifty, fifty-five to fifty-seven dollars a linear foot for the chain link fence. Uh, the field is about eighteen thousand dollars. There's, uh, three hundred and forty feet approximately of fencing to put up. Um, the south property line fence, I, I put this in there, um, that's a, a chain link fence, and that estimated at about sixty-six dollars a, a linear foot for chain link. Uh, but that's putting slats in it. It doesn't, um, slats are not going to, um, give the neighbors or ourselves any type of, um, real privacy between the, the property lines and our south, um, property owners to the, to the south of our facility. Tubular metal, uh, similar to wrought iron, only a little less lighter weight. Um, the Mayflower, the Kinder area is about twenty-two thousand dollars, and the field is approximately fifty-four thousand dollars, which is about a hundred and fifty, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars linear foot. A block wall at Santa Fe, um, i- is approximately ninety-eight thousand dollars, about thirty dollars a square foot for, um, wall. These estimates don't include any design costs that may be needed, uh, particularly for the block wall. We'll need some design on that, and that would have to, um, potentially go to DSA. It's a height thing, whether we go six foot or, or eight foot, depending upon, um, how high we, we decide needs to go. The cost there is for a six-foot wall. Back to Mayflower, um, real quick. Uh, Mayflower and Mrs. Kidderman is here to, um, I've had many meetings with Mrs. Kidderman, very delightful, um, very knowledgeable, and wants what's best for her school. Uh, the Mayflower PTA was interested in helping us, um, pay for the fence. They wanted the wrought iron fence. Uh, once, once they found out the cost, um, they decided that they would rather spend their money on playground equipment as part of the new field project. And they asked if we went with chain link, could they have a colored chain link? And that cost is about, um, another ten to twelve percent for a, a colored fabric rather than the, the silver galvanized look. That's my presentation. It's, it's up to you to, um, uh, lead us down the way that you'd like to go. Questions, concerns?
Uh, a- as far as the block wall goes, uh, I'm just kind of running through my mind. How many other sites have block wall dividers between residential and our property line? So I know some have it on one side, but not other sides.
We, we have, I'm, I'm thinking that, um, Monroe's completely surrounded by street. I think the only place we might have that is, um, Plymouth. I'm not sure. On the, uh, uh, east side, there might be a block wall on the east side of Plymouth.
Parking lot area, right?
Parking lot on that side. I think it's block wall on the east side. I think everything else is chain link. At the high school, behind the stadium is chain link, um, those types of things. The, the cost that I put up there for the Santa Fe chain link has slats in it. But I don't, I don't, I don't remember seeing any, any block walls. I didn't jump out at.
I, I don't remember any either. Maybe the north part of, uh, Mayflower has one.
You are correct. On, on the, on the, uh, east side.
East side.
The east side of the Colorado parking lot.
Mm-hmm. But then that teacher's parking lot is chain link fence.
Yeah.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Where it goes into the residential.
Have we had any issues or complaints from any of our neighbors that are on the other side of a chain link fence with concerns of?
If we could.
With concerns, I'll just stop it at that and let you fill in the blank.
Dr. Sweeney? Because I, I haven't received any.
Well, I think your question was specific to chain link. We currently have, um, what I would call a solid wall, um, that we currently get complaints with on the solid wall.
What are those complaints?
Dr. Sweeney, I think probably the microphone, because it has to get out.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I misunderstood the question. The chain link, I've received no complaints regarding chain link, other than the concerns that, um, Mayflower raised about the look and the aesthetic value and stuff like that. But I haven't received any complaints about, um, site or unsite links or anything like that. So.
Yeah, I, I'm more concerned at this point. This question is just with the residents, the separation between our site and our neighbors, whether we've had problems that are due specifically because of the chain link or the lack of privacy or any of those other issues.
I have received, I, I, I have received none.
Not aware of any. That's one. I, I can't think of any either. That's why, but I wanted to make sure I hadn't missed something.
And, and before we, we maybe make a decision with this, what we can do is survey the principals and find out if they have filled in any as a result of the chain link.
If nobody here is aware of them, then there are none. So I, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse. I'm just looking for something that's obvious that we don't know about.
The, um, are you, sorry, you're through?
Oh, uh, yeah, that, that's it. On, on that portion, I, you know, I just want to remind people as, as the economist person, there, there's definitely a difference between wants and needs. So, uh, what I want and what I need are often two very different things. So, that, I mean, that's kind of my line on, on the different fence types.
Uh, the question I have, particularly on Mayflower because it does front the street, how many properties on Mayflower that are adjacent to the school property currently use chain link?
I don't believe there's any on, on the, uh, west side of Mayflower. I don't remember seeing any. There's a couple of, um, uh, like picket fences, um, but I, I don't remember anything. Maybe some hedge fences, that type of, I don't recall any chain link on, on that street. We currently have chain link there now at four foot high.
A four foot, a four foot.
Correct.
The, and it's been there for a long time?
That would be my guess, yeah.
And it looks, and it looks like it's been there for a long time?
Yes, it does.
The, the question I have is what is the maintenance on a six-foot chain link galvanized fence versus the tubular? What do you have to do to either want them to keep them looking? Chain link can sort of deteriorate over time, even though it's galvanized, it will get aged.
The, the cha- the chain link will deteriorate over time. It will, it will rust. It will turn color. It'll take, uh, maybe ten, twelve years for it starts really turning color. Um, the tubular steel will most likely need to be painted and touched up, um, every couple of years.
Every two years.
Every, every couple of years. It's going to, um, um, get picked at every time it gets scratched, um, those types of things. And it's more, um, difficult to paint. You can't spray it. You have to roll it or brush it or.
So as far as maintenance is concerned, it's a lot more intensive on a tubular fence than it is on a chain link fence?
Yes.
The lifetime of the fence, are there, is there much difference if you didn't do maintenance on them?
If I didn't do maintenance?
Right.
No, it'd just rust and look bad, and eventually, maybe ten, fifteen years down the road, it'll start getting weak at the, at the base posts and things like that.
But if they, if it was coated, and I'm thinking a, a rubber coat is how they're going to, they were thinking of a different coating on the, on the fence.
Yeah, the contractor I talked to was talking about powder coating it.
Right.
And that, that will give up in time.
That's going to also add to the life and definitely the aesthetics of the, the rust of the galvanized.
Yes.
I know that'll, I don't know how, what the added time though would be.
What I'm trying to put myself is in the position of the people who live across the street. They cannot put a, anything higher than four foot across the front of their property. That's by code. Um, so they would not. There's also a code that says you cannot use chain link as front or cross your property. That's why you won't find it. It's not there. Um, you can use, um, chain link on the setbacks on the side and in the back, but you cannot use it on the front. And there's a reason for it, because chain link is not the most attractive of fencing options. We have to be diligent in the money that we spend, and so what my concern is this. We erect a six-foot fence now instead of the four foot that's currently there. It kind of, kind of blends into the landscape because of the color that it's become over the time, so it kind of blends in with the surrounding area. We're going to put in a brand-new shiny six-foot fence that will look institutionalized in a residential neighborhood. That is my concern. I think we don't have, the complaints we have right now are people who are users of the property that want to see something done in order to enhance the perception of security as well as, as, as aesthetics. My concern comes that once we put a six-foot fence up that looks like an institutional fence, then you will engage the neighborhood in it, because we're going to do something that they themselves cannot do, is put up a chain link fence in the front yard. And so anybody who butts that property will be staring right out their front door into something that they cannot even do themselves, and we're going to do it, uh, if, if we approve something like this. I just want to be very, very mindful of it, because we will come into conflict with property rules that the residents themselves would, would not be able to do. And I'm pretty sure that I'm right about the, the chain link fence across the front of properties.
But we do have schools like Wild Rose, right? Wild Rose is pretty much chain link fenced all the way around.
No, we do do that, but the, the issue that I'm speaking about is now, and way rules and government work, and I'm sure you're aware of it, Brian, is that whatever was done twenty years ago was done twenty years ago. But when you do it now, you have to bring things up and put them into code in the way they are today. I just want to be very careful as we're taking these steps that, and that's why I wanted to know what the difference between those two fence types was. It's probably easier to swallow for a resident to look out and see a more decorative option than it is to look at a, a shiny, galvanized, six-foot institutional-type fence. Um, and that's why I want to be very, very careful is, are there other options besides this tubular that's out there? Is something that's more decorative? Because that's where we will come into conflict. Now, will we come into conflict with a person two blocks away that's south of there? No. But we may come into conflict, and we should probably go out and have a meeting with each one of those property owners that are right there, that are going to be adjacent to it, that are going to look at this for the next twenty-five years. That seems to be fair to me. If I was living there, I'd want to be a part of that conversation. Um, I would hate to surprise somebody on a Monday morning with some really large poles rolling out some galvanized fencing. I think we'd probably hear from folks.
Also, uh, in addition to Board Member Hammond's comments, I heard you earlier speak amongst the PTAs, with the residents a part of the PTA.
Yes.
Uh, because history dictates that a few have complained about the security of the gates. And also what regards to Mr. Wong's comments about the need and the wants, I understand that the PTA does not want to subsidize, but if we're talking about colorization. I understand that the PTA does not want to subsidize, but if we're talking about colorization, wouldn't that be subsidized and should be considered?
It, it could be, but basically for the chain link fencing project, it's a number right around three thousand dollars. If we went at ten to twelve percent increase in cost for the colored screen versus the galvanized steel.
Yeah, because I, I heard PTA, PTA, but I'm, I'm in line with Mr. Hammond. You've got neighbors across the street. You know, has it been a door knock effort with them to invite them?
We, we had a meeting at, at the school that involved mostly parents. And there was some very passionate folks about what the fence should look like.
Can't imagine.
Yeah, so they were very passionate about what they were talking about.
I, I guess my biggest concern, at least with Mayflower, is what or how are we going to deal with the constant slide of earth from, from north to south, which has created problems with fencing? And will continue to create problems with fencing.
I believe that'll be cured next summer when we redo that field and grade it properly and get the slopes back.
So you think that as, as part of our field work that is already planned, that that'll help mitigate some of the, the earth movement?
Right. What we talked about is along that tree line there with the architect is to kind of create a natural slope there. So that the majority of the water slopes to the east and then rolls around to the south versus it all just headed for the sidewalk.
Okay, perfect.
Probably a natural burn there to kind of push the water. Tell the water where we want it to go.
In an overabundance of caution, particularly when it comes down to residents. I would, I would like to see, as in fact I will ask that all, if there's a future meeting on this, that the, the neighbors are notified. That meeting is held at a time that is convenient for those neighbors. It's not held in the middle of the day. It's held in the evening when probably their home. If we want to conduct that meeting, we could probably get something in that neighborhood to sponsor it at their home. It, it makes it more inviting to have it like that than even if it will be held at the campus. So I would encourage us to do that, to reach out to the neighbors. Nothing can make a project go sideways faster than if all of a sudden the neighborhood would get upset about something that's gonna go on. And I, I, I may be visualizing a problem that doesn't exist, but I've kind of been around for a while on neighborhood issues. And I, I think that we can solve a multitude of problems if we just reach out and do that prior to us trying to approve something. I think the neighborhoods will really benefit, and I think they'd appreciate it. And I think that, I think the folks that are going to school there absolutely have a right to say, but I think the people who have to sit there and look at that thing every day have as much right to say about what goes on.
Are you, just for a point of clarification, are, are you thinking of only the houses in which they're looking out their front door?
I would think everybody that's.
The fences on all of those properties, somebody's gonna be looking at.
Well, I, I think if you just take everybody that's across the street from, from Mayflower, from the north side to the south side, and probably go two houses up and two houses down, you're probably hitting the people who are getting most directly impacted. And I, if I lived there, I would like to have the opportunity to say.
So you're talking about the people who are looking out their front door?
Yeah.
Versus some of the other, like.
Because we're basically building that in their front yard is what they're gonna look at.
And while I think it's down policy to involve the neighbors, I also think that we need to move forward with this. Without a whole lot of additional delay. We've been talking about this for seven or eight years. And it's about time to get the final input and get the decision made as to how we're gonna deal with this issue. So I would hope we could have that kind of interaction fairly quickly and get this back to the board relatively soon. Sure would be nice to see a fence there by start of next school year.
And, and, well, probably at the same time we're doing the field modification, it'd be nice to put a fence in. You don't want to put a new fence in and do a field modification. But the question, other question I have is I know that we looked at those two types of fencing. I am not a fence expert by any stretch of the imagination, and nor do I profess to be one. But only two options may not be as many options as we can have. I certainly know that we are restricted to the use of the money that we have. But if there's other options that are out there, and maybe something that looks more decorative, but it has a longer lifespan than that tubular thing, that might be an option to look at as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
There was one question that got kind of left behind, and Dr. Sweeney was gonna tell us what the complaints have been on the existing Santa Fe fence. If you don't mind, Dr. Sweeney, that would be great.
The main complaints are, as you're aware, middle school's a special population, your ages twelve to fourteen. And bless their hearts, they're a rambunctious group. Sixth grade comes in liking to play tag, and eighth grade comes leaving liking to hang out and be social butterflies. The makeup of Santa Fe is that our main field abuts that block wall. So any really activity that happens on our campus happens on that field, and that includes usage off-campus, like MYBL, AYSO, all those different things. And the complaints we get are noise on the wall, if you will. For instance, when, if, because you can knock on it currently. It's like railroad wood slats, if you will. So like noise that you can hear through the wall, and then other complaints that we get is the deterioration of it because it is in poor shape. And they are very appreciative every time it gets fixed, because then they feel that they have their privacy back on their edge by having that solid surface, if you will, because it is their residence. So that's, those are the main things that our residences have comments about.
Excuse me. Has there been any discussion or comments from the residents about how important the privacy aspect of a solid wall versus a chain link would be?
Well, they haven't experienced a chain link, so I don't think that they would have that comment. But their big thing is always one hundred percent privacy. Currently, the wall is, I'm not sure how tall it is.
Six foot.
Um, six foot, which good news is twelve to fourteen-year-olds are five feet, so you're not looking over the top of that. But every once in a while, some of the top slats come down, and then you can see through it, and that is when, I mean, we'll, we'll know within one second of it happening on any day of the week at any time when that comes down, because it then encroaches upon their area, if you will.
Next, their backyard is a very public place when you've got a bunch of junior high students right against the fence.
Exactly. And it's, it's not just our time also. Like I said, it's the public usage. Like AYSO leans against the back wall, because that's where you're at, but that would be it.
Have we considered if we put a chain link fence up, I, I know at least for privacy reasons, one of the common ways to deal with that is to have some sort of vegetation either in front, like a hedge, or even something as simple as vines going through, you know, that, that's a different issue completely on different, on maintenance and so forth. But I think that's probably also something we, we can look at, or at least like to know if we've contemplated or, or the pros and cons on the ongoing upkeep. You know, of having some, something there in addition to the chain link fence. Obviously, the vegetation is gonna protect the fence in the long term, especially on those playgrounds, because I've been there for all of those events that you have talked about, and the fence is like a block wall. So you hit baseballs against it, you kick balls against it, you climb on it, you do all kinds of stuff. Whereas if you had a bush there or vines through it or whatever, that's gonna keep people off of the fence. Plus, I think that's also provides the, the privacy or sense of privacy of having something solid. And my only concern about meeting with, with the public before we have some sort of a game plan is simply this. If you come to me and say, hey, Brian, we're gonna put up a fence across the street, what do you want? I am going to tell you, I want the most expensive, best-looking fence humanly possible. And if I don't have to pay for it, I don't care how much it costs. So if we're going to go to the neighbors, and, which I think is a great thing regardless, they should be part of this and know what the timeline is and what we're doing and why. If, if we know that a particular item is not going to be financially practical, I, I don't want it presented. I, I, I don't want to say, here's a hundred thousand dollar fence. Have everybody say, yeah, that's what we want, and say, oh, no, but you can't have that unless you're each gonna put up five thousand dollars to defer the cost. So although I think it is very important to have them part of the, the conversation, I, I think that we need to set the parameters of what the conversation's gonna be, just to cut down. I, I mean, I think there's a potential to create additional animosity if we give them choices that really are choices.
Well, I, I wasn't proposing to go in there with the gold-plated fence. I was more trying to find, is there an option somewhere between that chain link and the tubular that was gonna require a massive amount of finances just in the maintenance, even though the difference is it's very small, fourteen thousand dollars between the two on the, on the surface. The upkeep is tremendously more expensive for the one that costs fourteen thousand dollars more to put in. That was the reason I asked the question, because I wanted to find out if you spent fourteen thousand dollars, can you turn around and, and walk away from it for twenty years and not worry about it? The answer is no. So that to me, the tubular isn't even an option. That's, that's a non-starter. So I wanted to know if there's something else between that chain link fence, the tubular, whatever it is. I, I have no idea what's out there for fencing. My concern, and I'll just rephrase it one more time, is that we, the government, are going to do something that those residents cannot do, which is erect a six-foot tall chain link fence in what will amount to somebody's front yard. They have to look at it, and they can't do it, but we can. I want to mitigate as much of the problem as we can before we even get there, which is include these folks in the conversation about, we're gonna be changing the fence across here. And this is what we're looking at doing. And it, you know what, everybody sat there and had a cup of coffee and a cookie and says, you know what, man, I'm so happy someone's addressing that thing. It's been ugly for fifteen years. We walk away and we're heroes. We don't reach out and get somebody, get some buy-in. We're not the hero anymore. This room's full of people that don't, maybe don't even have a kid there, but we're gonna be listening to them for Wednesday nights for a long time, because they're gonna be upset. That's what I want to avoid.
And to me, Rob, the key of your, your statement there, which I agree with, is that we've got to go to them with, this is what we're planning to do.
Exactly.
Or these are the two options we're looking at, if we have two options, and say, here's the two options we're looking at. And nine times out of ten, if it's not costing them, they're gonna say, oh, yeah, the most expensive one looks the best.
That's the best part about being the government, it is gonna cost them. Because you, you can tie it right back and say, yeah, well, it's not coming out of your pocket directly. It's, you're gonna pay for this thing. And if it doesn't last long enough, someone's gonna come back to you one day and say, hey, look, we need to get some more of your property, some more money on a property tax, because you gotta pay for this thing that you own. We are paying for it, and I would, I can turn that conversation real quick.
No, I, I, that's a, that's a point that needs to be made in those discussions with the.
And as far as my comments, it, it, it wasn't a matter of getting the approval from the residents, nor two examples for the residents to confirm. It was just more of just having some dialogue. You know, I mean, let's not be condescending here. Obviously, you guys have been having some dialogue for the PTA, for the residents. That was my concern, just not a, you know, bring, this is what we want to do. No. It's just allowing them to know that we're going to do it, you know, and I'm sure that's been happening, you know, and, and, and and my comments are not to be condescended to your efforts, because obviously I know you. You're very bright, and I'm sure you've talked to the residents, because as Board Member President Gilliland said, it's eight-year process. I knew about it before I was on the board. You know, but as Mr. Hammond says, you know, we're representing here, and we need to just cover our bases, period. Not an approval from the residents, and frankly, not the audacity to send two projects to the residents, but just in line with the residents, like Mr. Hammond is suggesting, and just have the coffee and say, this is what we're going to do. I think those residents know the arguments that that's been happening for the eight years. I think they know that. But again, I'm with, I'm favoring what Mr. Hammond said. Just sit down with him and say, this is what we're doing. On this day, we're moving forward. They know it's for the kids.
And one more thing, this is off-topic on the fence, but when we go to do the yard renovation, we should meet with the people who are around there too, because you can't put enough water on the ground once you start grading to control the dust. And folks there ought to know that we're getting ready to fix the, the turf area. And so we're gonna be creating this dust. I think the more you reach out to people, the less problems that you have, so we should include that as well, because I know that's coming right up to summer.
On a side note with that, I have a meeting with the architect scheduled for next week to look at the preliminary design, so that we can move forward with that. Once we have that, then we can start meeting with those community members as well.
I, I just want to be clear on the timeline. Is, is the game plan to do the field and the fence at the same time?
For the field part, yes.
Okay.
The K, the K area, no.
K area as soon as possible?
Yes.
Right?
That's correct.
And what about the other sites? That, that's, that's Mayflower. What about the dividing line on Santa Fe between their field and there's? We're not, oh, we are gonna do field work there at some point, aren't we?
Yes, we are. Two and one, right?
Starting March, we will do a Mayflower field, and two middle school, Clifton and Santa Fe.
The fields?
Mm-hmm.
All three?
Yes, yes, all three. Two middle school and Mayflower.
Okay.
Is it feasible, Vince? Is it even feasible to do a block wall and the field renovation at the same time?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Block or chain link? Either one?
Yeah, it, it just has to be done at the same time. We're doing the grading and things like that, so that when we back off the site, all is left is grass.
So by March, we need a decision whether we're going with block or chain link.
Yeah, and, and if, if we do that, we need to move on that fairly quickly, so that we can incorporate it into the design. Because right now, there's no incorporation of that design with the architect into Santa Fe's field.
When you say right away, is that like next week? Is that like next board meeting?
I would say in the next three weeks. Three, three to four weeks.
February twelfth.
We, we, we're planning right now to put that project out to bid the, in the first couple of weeks of February, so that we can have an award ready for you on the twenty-fifth of February, so that we can start to work the first week of March.
So this is scheduled as a report, not as an action item?
No, it, yeah.
But if you're putting a bid out. I would think you'd want to know what you're bidding on. That's just.
Exactly. So in terms of direction from the board, here's what I, I understood. Identify some parameters and options for both Mayflower as well as Santa Fe, the, the fencing there. Identify what options we can use that are feasible. Also, just as a point of clarification for the audience at home, the, the cost differential between a chain link and a tubular fence in total is fourteen thousand, but at the Mayflower site alone would be fifty thousand dollars. So that doesn't include the, the Santa Fe. But we can identify some options. We'll need to bring those to the board in some manner, and perhaps in a special session or an update, to look at some designs. And with that, schedule meetings with the neighbors, both at Mayflower, who would be looking at their front yard, as well as Santa Fe, who will be looking at their backyard, to, to provide some options that are feasible for us. And that in this, in the next three weeks is what I'm understanding. Okay?
Is it possible, since we are short on time, that we can talk about this a little bit more, let's narrow it down a little bit, and we can give a kind of a better direction, because it seems to be kind of wide at this point in time? I can tell you personally that I, I can't think of an argument that's gonna make me say I want to pay for the tubular fencing. So, you know, for you, I, I don't want you to just be chasing your tail here. I mean, we're running, the clock is ticking. So to take that one off, if the board is agreeable, that if we can strike that one. The things that we do need to know is what, if any, is there something between a chain link fence and a tubular fence? And as far as my option to the block wall, because I, block walls are, I, I think that the site's gonna have the same problem, or worse problems with the block wall. as far as the neighbors in the back as they do with the existing wall because it's a solid wall and they're going to be using it the same way they use this one, except for when it falls, it's really going to fall. So it's not going to be a slat, it's going to be a chunk. What the feasibility is to have a chain link with vegetation or some other natural barrier or something along that line? And whether that's feasible and what the upkeep, you know, it's kind of like Mr. Hammond mentioned at the beginning with the tubular fence. You know, the initial reaction is to say, what is the initial cost? That's what the cost of this fence is. And that's not what the cost of the fence is. That's the starting cost of the fence. And then we have an annual maintenance factor that sometimes overrides any cost savings or amplifies the expense as time goes on. So, you know, if I'm saying, yeah, it's really cheap to plant a hedge, well, that's not really the expense. The expense is to maintain it. And so that doesn't become an eyesore in addition to it. So, you know, I personally would like to know what it would be to have a galvanized fence or rubber coated if it's going to last longer with vegetation in front of it. I'm thinking galvanized is going to be the cheap way. Plus, if you're going to hide it with a hedge, then it's no big deal. You know, I'm leaning towards, on the Mayflower, the street side of going towards what the, you know, what the PTA and the families are looking for, which is a coated fence. I mean, there's, for three thousand bucks, to me, that's a cheap fix. I've got, I wouldn't blink an eye and I wouldn't ask the PTA to foot that. I'd rather have them take care of the kids and do what they do best and we should take care of the maintenance. But at the same time, to go to what Mr. Hammond is saying, if there's something in between, I would love to hear what it is. Because I don't know that anybody jumps for joy when they hear they've got a chain link fence that they're going to look at, but there's practical purposes to it.
Well, I understand. I don't know. Are there options between?
I don't know.
I'm not aware of anything I've seen at schools. They have some vinyl fences and things like that, but I'm not sure that's durable enough for what we needed for. We have to keep something that is see-through so that the Monrovia Police Department can see through the fence, that type of deal. So when they drive by or they come by and they can see what's going on in our yards, I don't think we want a solid fence on there. So I'm not aware of anything. I'm certainly going to reach out to some colleagues and see if they've found anything over the years. But I'm not aware of anything other than, you know, rod iron or chain link that you can, that works on a school.
I am happy with the notion of trying to soften the impact of the shiny new institutionalized six-foot fence. I'm sure that would go a long way. I'm just trying to think and put myself in the folks' position that live across the street. I'm not thinking of myself as a parent of a student. I'm trying to think of as a person who has to look at that all the time. And, you know, what is it that I'd want to look at? Something's going to happen. So what do I want to see? Probably less is more in this case. So if it's colorized or something, it probably tends to more blend because it has that, I want to call it the antiquing effect to it, or what do you, patina. That's the nice way of saying it. The patina effect of the used fence, which will blend more in with landscaping than anything else. It's still going to be a six-foot fence. But I'd probably go in that direction. And I definitely concur with Brian. The PTA needs to spend its money on what PTA's does and the board should spend the money on what the board's supposed to do, which is take care of the facilities.
What bothers me about the discussion between tubular metal and chain link is the Kinder fence is in front of our buildings. And the playground area is, you know, it's got chain link fencing. It's going to look like a playground and it's going to, chain link fence, you know, if we powder coat it, it's not going to look that bad in my opinion. But the Kinder fence, to me, putting a big chain link fence in front of our building right there just does not sit well with me. You know, if I had my rudders, we would put the tubular metal up there for twenty-two thousand and then fence the field for eighteen thousand more with chain link. Some kind of powder coating, et cetera. I don't know that the board has to vote on every fence that we put up, but as far as direction.
I would think so since it probably costs money.
Well.
I actually don't even know what a tubular fence looks like. So I mean, I'm over here arguing about something. I have the foggiest idea what it looks like.
Rod iron fence. We have, there's a park in the city here and I'm near Colorado and Lemon in that area. Or Colorado and Shamrock. That has a rod iron fence around it. Rod iron and tubular steel have pretty much the same look. Tubular steel is a little less expensive than a full rod iron. Rod iron is a solid bar where the tube steel is actually a square tube.
And the purpose of having the, is it a twofold purpose in front of the Kinder? One is to keep people out and the other is to keep people in?
I think it's more to keep people out.
Both.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, it's...
Still a purpose, sure.
But which one are we more interested in? Keeping out or in?
Out.
Okay. And which does that job better?
The height?
Okay.
So can we have a date that we're going to get the information that we need as a board to make the decision, including some maintenance costs? I really would like you to look seriously at the difference in costs, long-term costs of the block wall versus the Santa Fe, at Santa Fe, versus the chain link.
Long-term cost for block wall or, I'm sorry?
With vegetation and the care of vegetation to block them or to give the people behind us some privacy. Because I really, you know, we really do need to give those folks some privacy in their backyard, I believe.
The block wall versus vegetation that has to be trimmed every so often. One of my concerns with vegetation is that our neighbors may want us to trim their site as well. And then we would be working on other people's property with our liability. A block wall is, after it goes up, is, I hate to use the word, maintenance-free because there really is no maintenance-free product because we have the potential of building an easel, like we have out here, a C E L C, where it wraps around the corner there. And we could see some graffiti, but that's a matter of painting it out. There is some graffiti coatings we could put on it that will water blast it off, that type of deal. But one of the things that Dr. Sweeney talked about was she could use it to put murals on the wall, supporting Santa Fe's goals and those types of things.
Well, we definitely have a number of murals throughout the city that are definitely on the gorgeous side. So that's a possibility as well. I mean, we could look at that in that view. My question to you, Vince, is this. As far as what you need today, how much does the type of fencing affect your planning? Meaning that if we put a block wall versus a chain link fence versus tubular fencing, does that impact what you need to do going forward? So if the board says or is giving you the direction, we're not sure which fence it's going to be, but you're going to get a fence and we'll tell you at the next board meeting, based on the information that we have, what it's going to be. Is that going to impact your decision-making at all?
Yes. From the standpoint, we have to talk with the architect at Santa Fe with regards to if it's a block wall or a chain link fence, it requires a different kind of structural drawing. So, and there is, right now, there is no structural engineer on either of these projects. And the block wall will require a structural engineer to design the footings and the foundations for the wall.
Is there a difference between the tubular and the chain link fence, even if we're talking about the small section?
Those two fences, because they're open-type fences, are not required to be submitted to the state architect.
All right, perfect. So really what we need to focus on and get you a decision on is block wall or no block wall?
Yes. And if it's all right with the board, I'm going to pre-warn our architect tomorrow as to what our decision.
Getting it through the state, isn't that quite a cumbersome task?
I'm going to ask that question tomorrow. I don't believe we now, we had, we were not going to DSA in the beginning with either of these projects. I'll need to talk to the architect because they don't know what the bin time is at DSA. If that's, there's a possibility that if we go there with a block wall as part of this project, we could be delayed in the DSA and that project not happening in the summer.
And for the folks at home, the DSA is what?
The Division of State Architect. That's where all our plans and specifications are approved.
There isn't a project that goes on a school ground that doesn't go on until the DSA approves it.
That's correct.
And so we could want to do this field renovation this summer and tie it in with a brick, with a block wall. But if the DSA hasn't given us the permission to proceed, we're stopped until they finally say so.
We're stopped from the standpoint unless we push it out far enough that we could come back in after the fact and work in that area and then just repair that turf.
Just for fun, isn't it the same group that wanted us to do a snow load on the bleachers over at Monrovia High School?
Not having any knowledge of that, my guess would be yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was dealing with the same people.
Vince wasn't here, but the answer is yes. That's the same group.
It's the same load in Monrovia.
DSA's changed a lot over the last few years. They've become quite a bit more customer service oriented and they've been a lot more helpful rather than resistant. With the new change up there in the head at DSA, they've become more customer-friendly.
But even if we had the block wall in the plans, we could still go ahead with the field renovation and hold the block wall piece until...
That's correct. We could put it out as a separate project.
All right. So can we get a date that we will come back with your final recommendations and...
Better yet, do you have a final, can you envision how your recommendation would change based on, I mean, time is an issue here. So if you're thinking, there are no other fences. I know there's no other fences. And I heard your entire conversation. And taking all that into consideration, here is my final recommendation. Do you have a final recommendation or would you prefer to come back later?
My recommendation would be the block wall at Santa Fe and the chain link at Mayflower and a colored fence.
With a coating?
Yeah, with a colored fence.
And I respect that and I appreciate that, but I'm not comfortable with it. And the reason being is because we're responsible to the people on the other side. When they ask the question, are there any other options? I can't look at them and say, no, there are not, because I don't know the answer to that question. So it's not an exercise in futility. It's one of those things, I look at all things and this is where I am. And this is everything that I can look at.
And you have to because people will ask you openly in public and you want to be articulate, you know?
And this is not an action item on the agenda. So we can't take a formal board action. But if we can have, what I'm thinking here is if we're comfortable with Vince coming back with a firm recommendation by a certain date, that comes out in our Friday package, if anyone has a problem with that firm recommendation based on where the money comes from, some maintenance costs and whatever information you can put together for that Friday update, then he can start the process. If someone has a problem with it, we'll just have to bring it back to the February meeting and look at...
Those two things I'm interested in. The first thing is, is there another option? The second thing is that we need to talk to the residents that are there that are going to be affected.
And so the question is, what date can that come back?
Just for a point of clarification, the residents are looking out the front door, which is just the Mayflower people.
That's, yeah.
So you're good, are you good? Let me rephrase that. Is the board good with saying, Vince, put out the bid for a block wall on Santa Fe? Because I'm just curious if there's any other issues or is our big problem or, not problem, is our point that we want to make sure that we've covered every base just with the main fence on Mayflower?
My biggest concern is the fence that faces Mayflower.
Right.
That is my biggest concern.
People walk out their front door looking at a fence.
Okay. So my concern is not as much the Santa Fe. That's a need to get done, let's get it done. We need to get the one done on Mayflower too. But I want to be, I want to be real solid on where everybody is, the resident side, when we move forward.
Well, the reason I say this is because the block wall seems to be the only one that needs additional planning and different planning. So I'm saying that I personally don't have an issue with the block wall. And if he was to plan forward and we would ratify it at some later point in time, I would be good with that.
I'm good with that.
Yep.
And as a point of clarification, we would still inform the residents at Santa Fe about our process and what's going to happen. Yes, absolutely.
And the field renovation is coming up.
It's all part of that.
It's the whole conversation of what's coming up there.
Perfect. I mean, there isn't anybody that knows that lives on Mayflower, there isn't a school across the street. You knew it when you moved in and activity takes place. I mean, we can't, we can't sit here tonight and go, you know, all of a sudden like, poof, there's a school. No, it's just the school's going to change a little bit and we want to make you aware of the changes that are going to be happening.
Courtesy.
Thank you. That's it.
That's all it is, is courtesy.
All right. It sounds to me like we're all on the same page. You comfortable with where we're going, Dr. Throsen?
Okay.
Just a curiosity, PTA, what color is the favor?
It's black, believe it or not. There is an existing fence on campus, local campus.
You got her? Okay.
That we were given as a, to be able to go take a peek at. And I have since given that information to Vince as, to consider as an option. I do have some photos too.
Yeah, that would be something to consider, visibly seeing what we're doing. I didn't know black was a consideration.
All right.
Glad I asked.
Any more discussion, any more questions? Comfortable? Okay, we'll see you back at the February meeting.
Thank you, Vince.
And I'll have information very soon.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 9.1, pending board issues. Dr. Throsen.
I have nothing to report on that.
All right. Moving on to the next regular board meetings, February 11th is our next regular board meeting on which we'll talk about fencing. Then February 22nd, March 25th. New business. There's a whole host of dates to calendar, including several days that the sites are closed. January 19th, 30th, 9th, February 9th and 16th, 27th, the kids will be out. So hopefully, everybody will watch traffic-wise on those days. Any other new business to be considered? The other item under that is 11.2, Thursday, March 12th. We are going to host the Chamber of Commerce mixer right here in our district office. Appreciate you setting that up again, Dr. Throsen. It was a great time last year. A good time to just solidify some of our contacts with the chamber and those folks. So thanks for doing that. All right. With that, then we will adjourn the Regular Board of Education Open Session Meeting at 8:54.